12th, 2022 of the DuPage County Board to order. And may I ask, Mr. Greg Hart, would you please lead everyone in the Pledge of Allegiance? And then please remain standing for invocation.
My pledge of allegiance is that I, in the United States of America, am a true republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and omnipotent.
I'm delighted to welcome Bahi Mohinder Singh today from the Illinois Sikh Community Center in Wheaton to deliver invocation.
Thank you. I'm going to say prayer according to Sikh faith. O Master of all ages, O Master of all eternity, Supreme Master, the Divine Truth, I bow, I bow to you. Dear Lord, you are our Father, our Mother, our Brother, our Relative, and our Friend. You protect us at all places. You are the truth, you are the Creator and self-created, without fear or enmity. You are beyond birth, beyond death. Your light is spread in all your creation and each one of us. Lord, our God, with your grace, Illinois State has designated the month of April as Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month in Illinois. Today, in this gathering, DuPage County Board and its president are meeting for, among many other important meetings, to consider a resolution to issue a similar proclamation for the resident of DuPage County. We thank you for the opportunity you have bestowed upon us to share our love, compassion, and understanding among the residents of DuPage County. Please guide us today in this gathering, give us spiritual wisdom, dispel the darkness of ignorance, and give us strength to do the best we are capable of. Give us focus and let us not waver. Let us not be self-built. Keep us away from slander, malice, greed, and attachment. Let us not harbor hatred against anyone. Loving God, we pray for the people of Ukraine, for all those suffering or afraid, that you will be close to them and protect them. We pray for the world leaders, for compassion, strength, wisdom, and guidance to their decisions. We pray for the world, that in this moment of crisis, we may reach out in solidarity to our brothers and sisters in need. May we walk on your path, so that peace and justice become a reality for the people of Ukraine and for the world. As we sing your glory and pray for peace among us and throughout the world, may our spirits always remain high. We pray for the welfare of all. Waigurjikakalsa. Waigurjikupati. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you for that beautiful invocation. I'd also like to take this opportunity to recognize our Muslim friends in DuPage County as they observe Ramadan this month. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplain.
Here.
Chavez.
Here.
Covert.
Here.
Desart.
Here.
DeCiani.
Here.
Eckhoff.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Krajewski.
Here.
LaPlante.
Here.
Ozog.
Here.
Pachowski.
Here.
Renahan.
Here.
Rutledge.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Salmon.
Here.
Enzay.
Here.
We have a quorum. So, good morning, everyone. On the Order of Chairman's Report, we have a couple of proclamations and some recognitions. First and foremost, I would like to invite Rahinder Singh Mago and Member Chaplain to join me up here at the podium. April is Sikh Awareness Month. Welcome, sir. April is Sikh Awareness Month, and this year, we are honored to welcome our guests, representatives of the Sikh community in DuPage and the region. Allow me to introduce Rahinder Singh Mago, who is a resident of Wayne Township and who is the Public and Media Relations Representative of the Sikh Religious Society in Palatine. Member Chaplain joins us as well, having joined us in her request to recognize Illinois' 25,000 Sikh residents. I read our proclamation and I invite our guests to speak. And the proclamation is as follows. So whereas Sikhs have been living in the United States for more than 120 years, and during the early 20th century, thousands of Sikh Americans worked on farms and lumbermills and mines and on the Pacific, Oregon, and Eastern Railroad; and whereas Sikhism is the fifth-largest religion in the world, and there are currently more than 30 million Sikhs worldwide, with 500,000 Sikh Americans and 25,000 Sikh Illinoisans; and whereas Sikh Americans make rich contributions to the social, cultural, and economic vibrancy of the United States, including service as members of the U.S. Armed Forces and significant contributions in agriculture, information technology, small businesses, the hotel industry, trucking, medicine, technology, and numerous other industries; and whereas Sikh Americans distinguish themselves by fostering respect among all people through faith and service; and whereas this year marks the 10th anniversary of the August 5, 2012, mass shooting at the Sikh Temple of Wisconsin wherein a gunman murdered six Sikh Americans and permanently injured several more at the Sikh House of Worship in Oak Creek, Wisconsin; and whereas DuPage County is committed to furthering the diversity of its community and hopes to educate residents about the world's religions, the value of religious diversity, tolerance, grounded in the First Amendment principles, and a culture of mutual understanding. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the County Board, and members of the County Board, do hereby proclaim April as Sikh Awareness and Appreciation Month, and encourage our residents to better understand, recognize, and appreciate the rich history and shared experiences of Sikh Americans. I'll entertain a motion. Seconded, all those in favor say aye. Post nay. The ayes have it, approve this 12th day of April 22, 2022. Thank you so much. Thank you for your leadership in the community. Thank you for your influence, and I invite you to share a few thoughts with us here, please. Yes, sir, please.
Thank you, Chairman Dan Cronin, and the members of the Board of DuPage County. I'm really honored, our community is honored, to receive this proclamation so much. You know, the President already mentioned how important it is, this kind of awareness created amongst, to be created amongst our communities because of mistaken identity and misunderstanding of who these people are, and because a lot of it is fed from the negativity they watch on the television, and that's how it acts. You know, they're, they become victims of hate crimes or bullying on school buses, on playfields, in classrooms, and some other malls or on the street, because an average street person doesn't understand, when they look at me, they don't know who they are. So it is very nice to do this kind of awareness and proclamations, to educate people and create awareness about us. And again, I'd like to thank Liz Chaplin for introducing this proclamation, and the President, and also all the Board members, and Greg Schwartz, you know, I'm in his district, District 6. And I've been a resident of DuPage County for at least 45 years. I retired from Navistar six years ago after 42 years with them. I had this speech written up, but all I want to say is that our basic belief is oneness, you know, that there's only one supreme being, whatever you call it, and oneness of what? Oneness of divinity and oneness of humanity, because we're all the same. And Sikhs are guided by scripture, which is called the Guru Granth Sahib scripture, and which contains teachings of not only the Sikh teachers, the gurus, but also 30 other authors who were not even Sikhs. Some of them had no religion, they were upper class, lower class, middle class, they didn't care, as long as they had a message of oneness, their compositions, hymns, and verses were included into the Sikh scripture. So we respect all. It's all interfaith kind of traditions in our religion. And the only thing is the Sikhs have a distinct external appearance due to our religiously mandated Articles of Faith, one of which you're seeing, the hair and the turban. They all have some meaning, I won't go into all, you know, the meanings of all those, but that is sometimes the external appearance is kind of a misunderstanding to a lot of people. But we have the basic pillars of earn your living honestly, you know, share your bounty, good fortunes with the needy, and remember divine in everything you do, because if you're mindful of existence of some higher being, chances are that you're going to do good deeds. And then serve humanity without any discrimination, that I don't want to serve only my family or my tribe, everyone, because everyone is the same. Again, thank you so much, and we really appreciate it from our heart. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Team Proclamation. There they are, making their way into the room. Team members, coaches, and Member DeCiani to the podium. There she is, the star of the team. How are you, dear? Nice to see you. Yeah, very good, very good. Glad to have you here. All right. Fabulous. You got blue on, everybody else has got green. What happened?
Hey, it's about I got neon.
There you go. Well, welcome, welcome. We're glad you're here. We're glad you're here. The Dukes, let's go, Dukes. Love the Dukes. Five of my sisters and brothers went to York High School.
Oh, really?
Yeah. All my life, I've been going to York High School. Baseball and football, it's in the neighborhood. Fabulous place. Fabulous. Aw, come on in here. You can maybe turn her around. Yeah, that's good. How are you? Very nice. Very nice. It's wonderful. All right. So I'm happy to welcome our friends here from Elmhurst, some athletes who are just exceptional, exceptional athletes. This morning, we congratulate the York High School Special Olympics Basketball Team for their outstanding year. We also acknowledge the importance of Special Olympics, which provides social and team-building opportunities, as well as a sense of fun, competition, and inclusion for athletes. This is a wonderful day, and we're glad to honor these athletes and the coaches who do the coaching, and the loving, and the cheering, and the instruction, and they're all here today. So allow me to read a proclamation, and then I'll invite Member DeCiani to share his thoughts. Whereas, founded in 1968, the mission of the Special Olympics is to provide year-round sports training and athletic competition in a variety of Olympic-type sports for children and adults with intellectual disabilities, giving them continuing opportunities to develop physical fitness, demonstrate courage, experience joy, and participate in a sharing of gifts, skills, and friendship with their families, other Special Olympic athletes, and the community. And whereas, Special Olympics strives to create a better world by fostering the acceptance and inclusion of all people; and whereas, DuPage County is home to Special Olympics teams such as the York High School Special Olympics Basketball Team, which competes in the West Suburban Conference under the Special Olympics Illinois Rules and Regulations; and whereas, the York Special Olympics Basketball Team won its Region C Division IV Tournament in January, qualifying the athletes to compete in the state tournament held in Bloomington, Illinois in March; and whereas, the York Special Olympics Basketball Team placed fourth in the Illinois State Competition on March 11, marking an end to their most successful season yet, creating excitement and an incomparable feeling of accomplishment for the athletes, peer, coaches, parents, teams, adult coaching staff; and whereas, the York High School Special Olympics Basketball Program will continue to provide social, athletic, and team-building opportunities with the goal of helping students with special needs and their families. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the Board, members of the Board, do hereby York High School Special Olympics Basketball Team, and congratulate them for embodying the spirit of the Special Olympics, which empowers youth and educators to be leaders of change, creating a more inclusive world. I'll entertain a motion. So moved. Seconded, all those in favor say aye. Post nay. The ayes have it, approve this 12th day of April 2022. Where's Bree? There she is. You. All right. It's a special day in DuPage County when a team that's been participating since 2014 in the Special Olympics at York places for the first time ever. This team went downstate last year, unfortunately, with COVID, did not, weren't able to compete in the tournament, the tournament was canceled naturally. But they came back, and they came back with force. So they won the regional, beating old Park River Forest, I think it was 40 to 28, and I think, I think we were told to stop scoring, so that's a good, a good thing. And, you know, these, these kids are talented, they're special, and, and you talk about, you know, kids just know how to play together, and are affectionate, and considerate, and pass the ball, and are always worried about each other. It's, it's just great, and that's why I love being a part of this. Our Principal, York High School, Shaheen Betty Asken, is here today. He's, he's here with his team. I'm going to let him introduce the players and, and the coach, the coaches as well. And Bree, if you want to say a few words, you're welcome too, because DeCiani's like to talk.
All right. I just need a second to think. I don't know what to say. Okay, all right. Well, one of the most things you want to say is thank you for this opportunity, and yeah, I mean, since I'm a senior, this is definitely a great time for me and Emma and Tyler, and yeah, never forget this moment.
Thank you, and thank you for honoring our students. We are very proud of our students here for their participation this year in basketball, Special Olympics, and competing fourth place in the state, and what a great honor, and we are so proud of our students. I'm just going to honor, recognize our athletes here today, Matthew, Franco, Matthew, Jack, Ally, Will, Tommy, Hope, Bree, Lauren, Caleb, Jack, Ari, Nora, Emma, and Tyler. Congratulations. Great season. Keep up the great work, and thank you for honoring our students here.
Okay. Telecommunicators Week, and I always enjoy this week because we get to meet the people that are really in a very, very important position, right front and center, dealing with some really difficult and sometimes tragic and dramatic situations. And so I'm happy to welcome Greg Schwartz and Linda Zerwin. Linda's the greatest. I'm happy to welcome everybody here today, our ETSB Chairman and a retired first responder himself. There he is, he looks retired, doesn't he, kind of? So, no, he's not. He's working very hard every day. So to help me honor them, this week, we celebrate National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, dedicated to the men and women who serve as our public safety telecommunications. We mark the week in DuPage with a proclamation. Today, we're thrilled to welcome representatives of this very important group to receive our annual recognition and thank them for their lifesaving work, no doubt about it. So I'm going to read this proclamation, and then I'm going to invite Chairman Schwartz to come up and share a few thoughts with us. And we have a number of resolutions for each of the different teams, so it goes as follows. Whereas, since 1991, the second week of April has been celebrated as the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, to recognize all public safety telecommunications professionals who provide a central link, a vital link, to the public safety services on which residents rely every day. And whereas, the county of DuPage has three public safety answering points, PSAPS, PSAPS, Addison Consolidated Dispatch Senator, ACDC, DuPage Public Safety Communications, DuCom, there's Brian over there, and the Village of Naperville, PSAP. Who's from Naperville? There they are. Naperville Thrill. So whereas, these 145 public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical enhanced 911 contacts to the public during an emergency; and whereas, these 145 public safety telecommunications have a duty to respond to over 2 million 10-digit dial and 911 telephone calls from the general public for police, fire, and emergency medical assistance; and whereas, these 145 public safety telecommunications dispatch assistance to help save the lives of property, save the lives and property of our residents, contribute substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients; and whereas, above and beyond the daily rendering of emergency services in the last year, telecommunications using emergency medical dispatch also provided assistance over the phone to deliver one baby, save seven lives via CPR, and one life by providing Heimlich maneuvering instructions, and receive 37 Performance of Duty and Meritorious Service Awards from either their PSAP or their community. And whereas, the DuPage County Board acknowledges these 145 public safety telecommunications for continued commitment to public safety dispatch and consistent quality in customer service while maintaining the highest level of professionalism 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Cronin, Chairman of the Board, members of the Board, do recognize the week of April 10 through 16 as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. We express our gratitude and our thanks, and we commend them for all the good work they do. Enacted this, I'll entertain a motion, so moved. Seconded, all those in favor say aye. Post nay. The ayes have it. Enacted and approved this 12th day of April 2022. I have this for, why don't we, accepting on behalf of all the Mal community, why don't we start with Brian and our friends from ACDC? And, yeah. I'll give these to, let me hand them out to the people. Linda, we hand them out to the.
This is ACDC.
ACDC, yes, sir. So with that, I'm going to invite Greg, if you don't mind, come on up here.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the wonderful resolution. So you, you said a lot of things before you actually started reading that resolution, which is right on the money. So, you know, we as a board, we often recognize various people and groups through our resolutions and proclamations, and always deservedly so. But I think this annual resolution, recognizing and thanking our telecommunications, really needs to be given the magnitude it really deserves. Most, most people, when they think of 911, kind of think of it as an inanimate object. I got to call 911, I got to call 911. This is 911, these are the people. You know, these men and women that answer the 911 calls are so vitally important to our everyday lives, but it's kind of normal just to kind of take them for granted, because we expect to see the police, we expect to see the fire, we expect to see the EMS personnel show up. You know, there's so many emergencies that happen every single day. 2 million, 2 million calls they answered in, in one fiscal, one calendar year. It's just amazing. It's just amazing. And there's 145 of them. So I just wanted to make sure that we recognize these wonderful ladies and gentlemen from DuCom, ACDC, and Naperville. So as you know, I spent 28 years as a first responder, and I know the intense and difficult work that these jobs entail. So if you guys think your job is a pressure cooker, which many of us do, that aren't retired, try doing this job when seconds, literally seconds matter. I mean, they have to get the phone call, and they have seconds to decide who to send to what address for the right reasons. And, and they saved, you heard the statistics, they saved 37 lives, delivered a baby, I'm sorry, seven lives, delivered a baby, helped with a Heimlich. But those are the, those are the incidences that they had direct contact with, but just getting the right people to the right places, they save probably thousands of lives every single year, certainly thousands of lives. So 37 meritorious awards for their efforts, again, every single call they probably answer, certainly every 911 emergency call they answer probably deserves that award. So we have a very nice three-minute video to say thank you, and after that, we're going to introduce them and take some pictures. So Wendy.
You guys can see the screen. Late one night, heading on home, driving too fast, radio on, hugging that curb a little too tight, now he's hanging on for his life, upside down and all alone, hoping he could reach his phone. Eighty years old, watching TV, all of a sudden it's hard to breathe, she tries to get up, then hits the ground, wheel of fortune spins around, sends out a prayer, thought this is it, as she pushed the button around her neck. They're the ones behind the scenes, every day and night, that fellow boy who is here when you're fighting for your life. Not every angel wears their wings, but the room is there for you and me, to them it's just a job after all, but they answer the call. 911, what's your emergency? She said I like to order pizza, please, I never reached 911, she said I know, can you say hello? Man, is everything okay? No, it's 4:13, make the way. Is there someone in the room with you that you can't tell? Can you stay on the line? She said, nothing. I'll see you soon. I'll turn on my porch lights. They're the ones behind the scenes, every day and night. That fellow boy who needs to hear when you're fighting for your life. Not every angel wears their wings, but the room is there for you and me. To them, it's just a job after all, but they answer the call. They're the ones behind the scenes, every day and night. That fellow boy who needs to hear when you're fighting for your life. Not every angel wears their wings, but the room is there for you and me. To them, it's just a job after all, but they answer the call. They answer the call. They answer the call. (Music) (Applause).
You got to see them in a more relaxed setting, obviously, with those photos. Believe me, their job is a pressure cooker, it really is. So I'm not sure, I hope everyone on my list is here, so just raise your hand. From ACDC, the director is Bill Shrema, Mary Lou Hernandez, Deputy Director, okay? Sheri Ann Hermes, Abby Medina, and Gracia Flores. Anyone else from ACDC here? Okay, we didn't miss anybody. From DUCOM, Brian Tedmeyer, the director, Nicole Lamela, the Deputy Director, Amanda Schrader, who is the Training Coordinator, Sherry LaFever, Steve Prog, and Stephanie Sobuziak.
Sobuziak.
Sobuziak, okay, sorry, sorry, sorry. Anyone else from DUCOM? Okay, and then from Naperville, I know the director and deputy director are not here, Kate Smith, John Snowden, Emma Froelich, and Amy Kozinski, Supervisor. Okay, did I miss anybody? Okay, thank you guys so much. (Applause). Would you like to say?
So, you know, for me, if it made you a little emotional, it made me emotional. The song is perfect for what they do and the things that you don't think about that they do every day, people who are calling in need and can't exactly tell you what's going on. The only thing I don't like about that song is it says, "It's just a job," and for them, "it's a passion." And if you don't believe that, just look at their faces, because it's a passion for what they do. And we're very fortunate to have 145 really qualified super telecommunications in this county, so thank you.
(Applause). Evan?
Yeah, right ahead.
Evan?
We've done this before, kind of moving in a little closer. Please.
(Laughter).
There we go.
We can make that work.
Okay. All right, thanks, Keith. Well, that was some really interesting and wonderful presentations, don't you think, Member Chaplin? Thank you, everybody participated in all of that. So we're moving on to the next order of business, and I see that our state's attorney is here, finest state's attorney in the land. He's here to provide some information regarding the precinct maps, the DuPage precinct maps. Who'd have thunk that we'd spend this much time on this partisan political issue? But here we are. So our state's attorney, Bob Berlin.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So let me just kind of summarize what the law is and where we're at in this process. Public Act 668 became effective November 15 of 2021, and what that act did is require within 60 days, for this year only, in 2021, that a county board shall change the boundaries at a regular or special meeting within 60 days after the effective date of the Amendatory Act of the 102nd General Assembly. And the statute gives a list of requirements that each precinct shall be composed of contiguous territory in as compact form as can be for the convenience of the electors voting therein. What the statute did not change is there's language further on down that says, "If for any reason the county board fails in any year to redivide or readjust the election districts or election precinct, then the districts or precincts as then existing shall continue until the next regular June meeting of the county board." In our board's situation, the board did have a meeting, it actually had a special call meeting in an effort to pass maps that would comply with this law. There was an extremely robust discussion at both of those meetings, and the board did not pass a map. However, with the statute being as it is, the maps that are in place, that I believe have been in place since 2017, are still in place, and the board is completely compliant with the law. Now, the board has the opportunity, this coming June, it says until the next regular June meeting of the county board, where the board could pass maps. However, in this, if we wait till this coming June, I would remind the board that on May 19 of 2022, vote-by-mail ballots are sent, and early voting actually begins the same day on May 19. If the board were to pass new maps this June, you would be passing maps after voting has already started, and there's a likelihood that with changed precincts, a lot of people would have voted already for people that may now no longer be in their precinct. The board has the opportunity then to do this again in June of '23, and at that time, obviously, you would have much more updated data from the clerk's office regarding the number of registered voters. And if you did it in June of '23, it would be effective for the 2024 primary in March and thereafter. So the board has a number of options. You could legally pass a map this June that would be against our advice, or you could pass a map this June that is effective in 2024, I'm sorry, yes, in '24, or you could wait until June of 2023 to pass the map then, all of which are within the confines of what the law allows.
Okay, I suspect there'll be some questions or comments or statements. Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my first question is, the intent of this law was to increase the size of the precincts. And to me, it seems like that 60 days was, everyone was supposed to do that. And from what I know, we are one of one, two, out of 103 counties, whatever it is, who did not do so. So it seems to me that you need to start with that premise, that we will increase the precinct size, which we'd also put in on our legislative agenda for two years. So from there going forward, you would change the June dates, and we failed to do that. So by not filling the intent of the law to increase the precinct sizes, it would seem to me that we are not in compliance with the intent of this new omnibus bill. So then going forward, we were going to be allowed to make adjustments each June depending on population change, et cetera. So it, I think, what I understand is that we should adopt a map according to what the law is calling for, that we increase the size of the precincts this June, and then potentially don't make that effective until after the June and November 2022 elections. So even though municipal and consolidated elections aren't really precinct-based, it would be in effect in 2023, and we would have fulfilled the intent of the law. So that's my problem, that I understand you think we're in compliance, but I don't understand how we are in compliance when the law said, "Raise the size of the precincts." And we've not done that.
The law did say you're supposed to go from 800 to 1,200 voters in a precinct. The law gave a 60-day period to change the precincts. But if the legislature intended to absolutely mandate boards pass new maps, they would have stricken the language in the statute that says, "If for any reason a board doesn't pass a map, you can do it the following June." They left that language in there, and we presume that that's what the legislature intended when they left the language in there. I would point out that when you look at the word "shall," "shall" can be interpreted as a directive or a mandatory. And in this case, the case law would show that it is directive-only and not a mandatory provision because of the consequences. And that by leaving that language in there, that says a board can do it the following June, and the same maps stay in place, our interpretation is that it is directive-only and not mandatory.
Okay, I just, I understand that interpretation in "shall" versus "if we don't," so that does open up a door. I understand that. But I do want to make clear that the intent of this was that county boards were to create a new precinct map, and we did not do that. And I just want to clarify and restate what I've said in the past, this was not the job, the responsibility of the clerk's office, it was the responsibility of the county board. So according to you, going forward, we are not in any sort of legal jeopardy situation that we have not complied, but we do need to comply at some point. Is that correct?
My opinion is that you are in compliance with the law, and yes, at some point, if these maps are not changed to go to the 1,200 voters for precinct, at some point, there's a good chance you would become out of compliance, just based on the other requirements that the precincts have to follow.
And when would that point occur? Do we have any idea, since we are one of the only counties who didn't approve a new precinct map?
I can't say when it would occur, but my opinion is that if the map is passed in June of '23, you are still in compliance, and it would be effective for the '24 election. Our opinion is that that does comply with the law. If you don't do it in June of '23, and we just keep the maps from 2017 as is, there's a good chance at some point that we may become out of compliance. But I can't say when that date is.
And would there be penalties? Any kind of penalties that would be?
Well, people could file a lawsuit. Voters could certainly file a lawsuit.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Further discussion, further commentary, Member Chaplin.
Thank you so much, Chairman. Thank you, Bob, for the presentation. Appreciate it. So, okay, I'm just struggling a little bit. So right now, we're out of compliance, or we're in compliance. Right now, we're in compliance with the law. But at some point, you feel we may be out of compliance if we don't do these maps, but you don't know when, correct?
Correct.
So are you expecting a change in the law that would make us out of compliance? I mean, why today would we be in compliance and why next year we wouldn't be in compliance? It doesn't make much...
I'm not saying that you wouldn't be in compliance. The law says if for any reason the board doesn't pass a new map, the same map stays in place. That could go on every single year, but I think with changes in the number of voters and where they live, at some point, I think we would all agree you would be out of compliance. We can't predict when that would be.
Okay, so, okay, so now if we were to do these maps in June, this June, and date them for 2024, how would that affect our, because we're still using the old maps until 2024, but we've, you know, we've made a good, you know, we did it, we post-dated it, so we're going to do it in 2024, so, you know, we're in compliance, even though they're not going to be effect, well, not in compliance, but we're following the intent of the law, even though it won't be effective for, you know, until 2024. To me, that makes it look like we did our job, that we, you know, addressed the issue, and, you know, I mean, I feel kind of that we're the only county that didn't do this. You know, other counties, I read this great memo from Jason, and a lot of the county boards had, you know, I think our clerk did everything she was supposed to do, everything that, you know, is in this report, pretty much other clerks did the exact same thing. We had one county that had some small changes made to the map, they had a special call and that map was adopted. We had a special call and had some changes made, but our map wasn't adopted. But I think it's important to stress that, you know, I was kind of troubled to hear that, you know, we're discussing a political, a partisan political issue. These maps are, should not be a partisan political issue. And I think what's interesting, and I did call these counties myself, is that every single county, none of them made this a political issue. None of them had the parties come in and discuss the maps, and very little had county board input, so as far as drawing the map. Then it went to the county board to vote on. But this really should not be a partisan political issue, because as you stated in your opening comments, I believe, that this was for the convenience of the electorals, the election, the election, the voters, not for the convenience of precinct committee men, not for the convenience of the political parties. You know, this is the convenience for all of our voters. So, you know, I think we have a good map, we have two very good maps. I think that we could adopt this June and have them dated 2024, and then, you know, in June of 2023, we can tweak them, because I read these comments, and some of the counties weren't thrilled with the maps, but they adopted them, knowing that they could go back and amend them and address them at a later time. And a lot of them even said this in the comments, they were going to go back at a later date and adjust them. And this board could have done that as well. So, you know, my personal thoughts is, like I said, it's no skin off my back either way, but, you know, I just feel that the board, we didn't do our job by not adopting the maps, because we had some good maps that we could have voted on. So that's all. Thank you.
Member Pachalski.
Bob, thank you for your opinion. I was wanting to make sure that we were in compliance, and I agree with Chairman Cronin's memo that June of '23 would be the time to look for it, and we are still in compliance if we wait to June of '23, and people's integrity at the voting early prior to that date is not impacted. So I would think June of '23 would make a lot more sense than any other date.
Member Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Bob. I mean, when you're drawing maps, I mean, what some members had said, you want to take a map that was drawn in December or January of this year and not make it into effect until 2024. That's not good map drawing. I mean, the best map is to get the local, most data that you have. That would be wait until after this primary and this election, we're going to have new people registering to vote, a new vote total. In the meantime, we're going to have development, we're going to have new people moving in. Do a map in June of 2023 for 2024, that would be the most recent map with, I think, the correctest data that we could do at that point. Try to do one now, and then what would you have to do? Come back in June of 2023 and tweak it again? It doesn't make any sense. Let's do it the right way. And I know there's been a lot of talk about who's responsible for this map. I mean, who's responsible for drawing this map? Is it the clerk's office or is it the county board? Because I think there's a difference of opinion on this. Could you?
Sure, so, number of questions. First of all, what I can tell you is legally, you can do it this June in '22, legally, you can do it in June of '23. Obviously, in June of '23, you're going to have more recent data. And my legal advice is in the interest of transparency, which I know this board and the chairman is all about, come this June, there should at least be a discussion so that the public knows what...
Try to do one now, and then what would you have to do? Come back in June of 2023 and tweak it again? It doesn't make any sense. Let's do it the right way. And I know there's been a lot of talk about who's responsible for this map. I mean, who's responsible for drawing this map? Is it the clerk's office, or is it the county board? Because I think there's a difference of opinion on this. Could you?
Sure. So, number of questions. First of all, what I can tell you is legally, you can do it this June, in '22. Legally, you can do it in June of '23. Obviously, in June of '23, you're going to have more recent data. And, and my legal advice is in the interest of transparency, which I know this board and the chairman is all about, come this June, there should at least be a discussion so that the public knows what you're doing and why you're doing it. And in terms of, you know, the, the map itself, the statute says the county board is, is charged with drawing the new maps, but the reality is the data comes from the clerk's office. So it's hard to draw the map without getting that data. And obviously, as you pointed out, if you wait till June of '23, you're going to have the most recent data from the '22 and the April of '23 election.
So, so then, at the best, this should be a joint effort between the county board and the clerk. Obviously, we don't have the data. The clerk drew the other maps. So when we do come back to see this, there should be a coming together of the two, the two bodies and come up with maps.
I, I would certainly encourage the board to use the most recent and accurate data in drawing the maps. I think that's what we all want.
Thank you.
Member DeSart was seeking recognition, followed by member Shorzy, followed by member Ozog.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to answer member Zay's question. I have read the law. I've got the law right here. And I highlighted how many times it says the county board and how many times it says county clerk. It says county board in the statute 24 times. 24 times, it is the county board's responsibility to put this together. It mentions county clerk only twice. And one of those times is to say that the data needs to come from the clerk, and the second time county clerk is listed, it says shall immediately notify the state of Board of Elections of a revision. So all the county clerk does is provide the data to the county board and then report back to the Illinois State Board of Elections. So as to whose responsibility this is, this law says 24 times that it's the county board's responsibility. That's, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Member Shorzy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Look, I voted for our clerk's initial precinct map changes. I thought Jean Casmeric's office did a wonderful job putting that together. You know, there's no skin off her nose if we chose not to use it. But I would like to hear maybe some plans on how we're going to move forward. We're throwing out dates and stuff like that. If we're not going to use that map, which again, I, I thought Jean Casmeric did a wonderful job, her office did a wonderful job putting that together, let's figure out how we're going to move forward and, and, and get a map that people will approve. Thank you.
Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think a major failing in our process here, and again, I was on the committee that drew the county district maps, is that we, and I noticed this in some of Mr. Blumenthal's research, we did not place this responsibility with a committee, and I think that that needs to be done. And there's no reason to not do it while we are all in office right now, at least put the committee in place. You don't have to name the people, et cetera. And that after the new term starts in December, this committee would meet and would decide how we're going to approach this in 2023. So I would like to see, Mr. Chairman, that that committee is appointed before your term ends, and we can discuss this, and then findings of that group are brought to the board as a whole. And going forward as well, I certainly hope, and I will say that this was part of our discussions, both in our regular and special call meeting, that we do this as a service to our voters. This is not a partisan issue. And we are not here to defend various precinct captains or anybody else who's affected by this. You know, the old saying that if nobody likes it, it must be a good law. Perhaps there's something to be said with that, because it is increasing the size of the precincts, and that was something that we wanted to do. So I hope we have a committee before the end of our term, even if nobody's named to it, the committee should exist. And going forward into the next term, we go forward in a committee fashion so that people in a bipartisan way can decide how we're going to do this. Thank you.
Member Chaplin, followed by member Garcia, followed by member Renee.
So, thank you so much. So I guess what I'm hearing, just to summarize this discussion, Bob, I think you said that this June, we should probably have a discussion on the maps, right? So maybe for our June meeting, we just have a discussion, and maybe that's where we could maybe set up, maybe the chairman could set up a committee or something. But we should have a small discussion, some kind of discussion on where we plan to go with the maps in June, so at least we've addressed it this June. Is that what I'm hearing?
I think that is the best option.
Okay.
Because you want to be as transparent as possible.
Okay. All right. So then, we should look to have this on our agenda at one of the two June meetings.
Have a discussion, and if the board decides to wait till June of '23 because you want the most accurate data, the public knows exactly what the board is doing.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure. Member Garcia.
Thank you, Chairman. I wanted to thank you so much for coming here today, State's Attorney Berlin. I, I appreciate so much you clarifying that we are in compliance, and, and your office sees us as in compliance. So I very much appreciate that, that you came here and let us know that, because that's what's, what's been bothering me, you know, are we or are we not? So I really appreciate that you've made that very clear, that we are in compliance. I do think that member Chaplin has a good idea, and you had brought it up first, that we have some kind of discussion in June to let our electors, or, or at least the people of the county, know exactly what we're going to be doing. And then I think that's going to satisfy member Ozog and member Shorzy, that we get some kind of plan going forward. So I just want to thank you for, I think none of that would have happened without your clarification of this. So I really appreciate you coming here.
Thank you.
Member Renahan.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Zay's attorney, for being here today. We appreciate that. I guess I have a question. It's not, you know, what if we do, what if we don't? I'm concerned about just more common sense impact with what's going to happen with the election, because we're kind of, you know, people can't go to one, you know, these precincts are basically not working out with all of our other congressional and other districts. So do you have, I mean, do you, are you worried we're going to get sued later on, or if there's, the election's going to be thrown into some kind of results called into question because of us not acting?
When you say, what if we don't, when?
Well...
In other words, if you don't do it this June...
Let's say sooner rather than later.
Um, I, I'm not concerned...
Let's say this year.
I'm not concerned if nothing happens this June, which again, I really, my whole office would advise against, because it's after voting has started. If we go beyond '24 and there are no changes, then I would be concerned at that point as to what might happen. But, but at this point, legally, I am not concerned about a challenge. The board, this board tried. No one can say the board didn't make an effort in two meetings to try and comply with the 60-day provision. But again, when you don't comply, there is a provision that says the same map stays in place. You're still legally in compliance with the law.
Okay. Further discussion, member Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, Bob, I see Pat Bond's here, the clerks here, that they have anything to add, they want to add? I mean, I don't know. I mean, you look ominous standing behind the state's attorney there.
I appreciate your observation, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. State's Attorney Berlin, I think, you know, answered the, the questions that were being asked with respect to the current status and moving forward. And I certainly concur with that, and have been an election law expert since the late to mid-'80s. I certainly would concur with that.
Do you think we won't have any legal problems if we don't?
No, because the precinct committeemen are an odd bunch, because they're elected at a primary election. You should advocate, I'll get off my soapbox in a second, getting rid of that. That should be a party, partisan process anyway. But right now, the, everybody filed their nominating papers with the status quo. And as State's Attorney Berlin indicated, there is a, a safety net or a, a backup provision that pushes this till June. The realistic, practical effect is you will not be electing in that, in that sense, the precinct committeemen are not on the ballot until the, the March 19th, 2024 election. If you made some alterations at this juncture, people would have gone to the vote, gone to the polls, they would have elected a precinct committeeman to a precinct that may no longer exist. So you create a lot of different issues by doing that moving forward. There's clarity. Nominating petitions for the 2024 would start in mid-September of 2023. The filing period would end in December, mid-December of 2023. Everything would be in place in time for everyone to know what precincts are eligible for, for election at that time in the 2024 election. So by doing it within that timeline, that, that is required. And again, the statute requires you to act. There are some, some fallback positions in the event you don't. The fact that you had robust would be an interesting way of describing the meeting I attended, but certainly it was a, it was a, an interesting meeting, and, and a lot of, you know, that's part of democracy, so having the back and forth. But in terms of compliance, yes, it's, it's in compliance. Thank you.
And you're right, it's not a partisan issue. So I'm sorry, I misspoke. A political issue, I would say, though. So I think that concludes our remarks and our questions and answers. And, and I want to thank Bob Berlin and Pat Bond, both of you gentlemen, professionals through and through. Thank you for your guidance here. Very, very helpful, very informative. Thank you for joining us today.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we move on to the next order of business. Just chairman's remarks, just a couple of quick thoughts to share with you. I, I want to draw your attention, if I may, to an incremental victory in our effort, our continuing effort, our zeal. I know how committed and passionate all of you are to reducing the size, scope, and cost of local government in Illinois. And if you read the editorial in the Daily Herald on Friday, Daily Herald's my favorite newspaper, the editorial board praises the bipartisan passage of Senate Bill 3789. As you all know, I, I know you're very involved in the process of bills like this. It calls for all taxing bodies, except counties and municipalities, to review every 10 years and report, report on their own efficiency. As they develop these reports, and what means efficient, and what those standards are, they must consider whether then they can collaborate or consolidate functions with another unit of government to reduce costs or streamline operations. What an enlightened piece of legislation. I, I'm just, I'm, takes my breath away. This bill is awaiting the governor's signature. I am, and I believe we should all be justifiably proud of our efforts here in DuPage County to lead the way on this, this approach to governing. We've called it our Accountability Consolidation and Transparency Approach, or the ACT approach or initiative. It is gratifying to see that the strategies we piloted and pioneered turning into standard operating procedures here, not only in DuPage County government, but there seems to be an appetite to adopt this approach to governing in the state of Illinois. I do believe our actions fueled additional bills and efforts like this, 3789, shining the light on our obligations to make local governments run as efficiently as possible. That's our duty and our obligation to taxpayers, all those folks that are out there working hard to make ends meet and pay their taxes. We owe it to them. So I wanted to share that little piece of news with you. With that, we move on to the next order of business. It's entitled "Public Comment." This is where we invite people from the public to share their thoughts with us. We welcome that. And according to our board rules, members of the public shall be afforded time to address the board. Individual remarks shall not exceed three minutes in length, nor shall the total time provided for all remarks exceed 30 minutes. Our first speaker is Judy Beaver from the League of Women Voters. Oh, sorry about that. Never mind, I'm sorry.
Chairman Cronin and DuPage County Board members, my name is Judy Beaver, as you heard. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of Wheaton, and I'm speaking on behalf of our sister Leagues of DuPage County, including Naperville, Roselle Bloomingdale, Glenellen, Downers Grove, Woodridge Lyle, Elmhurst, and of course, Wheaton. Voting in elections is how we, the people, have a say in deciding what impacts our lives. Election workers are essential workers who support our communities in DuPage County. Our democracy depends on these workers. Throughout the deadly pandemic, election workers sacrificed their own health and safety to ensure that we were able to cast our votes safely. And they worked overtime to be sure every vote was counted accurately. Today, April 12th, is Thank Election Heroes Day of Action. Let's come together to thank our election workers, the volunteers, the election judges, the poll workers, the ballot counters, and of course, DuPage County election officials, to let them know how grateful we are that they count every vote and protect our freedom to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment today is from a familiar face, the mayor of Burr Ridge and a former member of this august body, Mr. Gary Grasso, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm here to support item, I think it's 17 C and D, it's the IGA between the county and the village of Burr Ridge. I would like to digress first, but I won't go beyond my three minutes. We have an Illinois state dignitary here, a former Lieutenant Governor Evelyn Sanguinetti. So we're in the presence of real state representation. And also, let me digress very quickly. I did not realize today was, although I should have. As the former chairman of ETSB, Greg, we're very proud. I was very proud to be able to sit here, but my proudest days were as chairman of ETSB. And on the theme of consolidation, we went from 18 PSAPS to three in the four years that I was chairman, saving DuPage County residents $9 million a year. So just want to make that point. The IGA between Burr Ridge and the county is good government. Please vote for it. Let me, let me tell you what happened here very quickly. We, as Burr Ridge, could not afford to rebuild this culvert. It overflowed a salt creek right near Elm School, putting children, bus routes, commuters, parents in a little bit of danger, but it flooded four times a year. And finally, it was failing and would be a constant problem. It was going to cost us a half a million dollars, which we did not have, and in Burr Ridge, we tend not to spend money if we don't have it. And we were able to apply a couple of Band-Aids to make sure public safety was, was taken care of. The federal government, working with the county of DuPage, helped us not only fix the culvert, but build it the way it should be built. And so with over $700,000 coming from the federal government, and talk about bipartisanship, Senator Duckworth was part of that. Working with DuPage County and another $50,000 that's on your table today, and $150,000 from us, we are going to build the right culvert that will take care of the people, our children, and this area of DuPage County in Burr Ridge. This is good government. The number-one job of government is to protect people and property. And this shows how bipartisanship at the level of the federal government, county government, and municipal government can work for the betterment of the people. So I urge you to pass the IGA and help Burr Ridge remain a very special place. Thank you, Chairman.
Very nice. Thank you, sir. Our next public commenter is none other than Evelyn Sanguinetti.
Hello. Good morning, everyone. So, did you folks know that it is the anniversary of the Federal Fair Housing Act? And this is very, very important. You see, in 1968, which was when the act was passed, there was a lot going on in our communities, a lot of hurt, a lot of discrimination, a lot of outrage. And this act particularly prohibits discrimination in housing based upon race, based upon religion, national origin, sex, disability, and family status. So fast forward a few decades, and I find myself as the executive director of Hope Fair Housing during COVID. And a lot of us found a lot of things going on in housing, which did not reflect the spirit of the act. We found that there was an eviction moratorium, that there were individuals that had monies coming in by virtue of vouchers and other types of assistance, other sources of income that were perfectly legal and acceptable to landlords. Yet some landlords and some sellers chose to discriminate against these individuals on the basis of their legal source of income. Those individuals could be our veterans receiving HUD vouchers. Those individuals could be individuals in our disabilities community, in our senior community, and even those moms that were receiving, were receiving child support. And also, those women that were running from their aggressors, and they had one of these emergency vouchers. Yet landlords were still free to discriminate against them. In Illinois, there are only a handful of communities that have powers to eliminate source-of-income discrimination. Naperville, our neighbor, being one of them. But the rest of Illinois, most of Illinois, did not have those protections. But the rest of Illinois, most of Illinois, did not have those protections. Until two years ago, I came before this board and talked about this issue. And the board told me, it sounds like a great idea to eliminate source of income discrimination throughout the state, but we're not a home role unit. And that makes sense, but you folks helped us out and issued a proclamation to let us know your spirit here in DuPage County and the fact that you're against source of income discrimination. And with that, we worked collectively to develop a statewide coalition so that we could get what is today House Bill 2775, eliminating source of income discrimination across the entire state. I had the help of a few members right here. I worked closely with Member Hart. I worked closely with former member Tim Elliott, Member Chavez, Rutledge, Selman. And we went before the Economic Development Committee so that we could make source of income discrimination, House Bill 2775, DuPage's legislative priority. And collectively, we did it as a people. And last Friday, House Bill 2775 passed before the Senate and before the House. So congratulations. Thank you for showing up to work in the name of human rights. We've made history here in DuPage County. Gracias.
Very nice, thank you. I think that concludes our public comment. I'm advised, oh, there is some comments? Okay, Evan, forgive me, there's some comments that came via electronic means. So with that, Evan will present.
Good morning, everyone. This first comment is a late submission from the last county board meeting. It is from Maria here. The subject is Kids World. Comment reads, my name is Maria here. I have lived in DuPage County for 46 years and have been a resident of Lyle since 2001. I have worked in childcare since 1987 and have a BA in early childhood leadership. I want to address the parking concerns for the new facility for Kids World. I know there are concerns about parking in the neighborhood or making a U-turn on Maple Avenue. I worked at a center off a busy street for 20 years, and not once did a family park on the street to enter our building. If there was not parking at the time, they would wait until a family left to park in a parking spot. No family wants to walk their child or children off a busy street to enter as it is not safe. As for making a U-turn to enter if a parent is not able to make a left turn, they are not going to go further to make an unsafe left turn across the same street. The parents also want their children to stay safe. There are so many new opportunities that having a new space will provide for our current families. Early childhood is ever-changing, and it is important for us to keep up with it. This new space will allow us to create a sensory outdoor space with more green space for our children, which will provide so many new learning experiences for our children. That is the end of that comment. Second comment is from Lauren Voss. The subject is Controlling the Varmints. Comment reads, hello, elected officials of DuPage County. My name is Lauren Voss, and I am a resident of the Meadows, Lyle, Illinois, which is under your jurisdiction. Our neighborhood is overrun by mice, voles, skunks, and squirrels that litter everywhere and destroy our personal property. I'm hoping to come up with some ordinance that will deter our neighbors from feeding these nuisance animals. I didn't think much of them eating my hassas one year, parenthetical, out of 30 that I planted, only two survived, end parenthetical, or finding my shed covered in their droppings. Isn't everyone's? But a few weeks ago, our baby's car seat was destroyed by mice. They chewed right through the harness. There was no food anywhere in the car. I have a car vacuum with me for crumbs. It's a $350 car seat that we couldn't afford to replace. My heart sank. Never in all my 37 years of driving have I ever had a mouse destroy something in my car like this, and I used to keep some pretty questionable fast food remnants in my car as a teenager. Don't get me wrong, I love animals. This is why I'm writing. I don't want to put poison out. I value the owls, the raptors, the coyotes, and the foxes that prey on these animals. In the Meadows, our lots are smaller comparatively to other neighborhoods in DuPage. One-fourth an acre, an acre to maybe just a couple of half-acre lots. Most hover around a third, about 500 homes. This is too close to one another to be feeding varmints. My idea, if you are under an acre, you will be fined for putting out food. If you are an acre or more, go ahead, feed the animals. If you are quote, open composting, end quote, under an acre, you will be fined as well. If you are under an acre, your compost needs to be in a closed compost container. You can only open compost on an acre or more. This last one only, not only attracts nuisance animals, but smells terrible. Thank you so much for reading this at your board meeting. I'm, I am going to let my neighborhood know that I wrote this so we can have something to rally for. I'm happy to share pictures of the car seat or anything else that might further your consideration. Sincerely, Lauren Voss. And that is the end of the public comment.
Okay, thank you. That concludes our public comment. We move on to the next order of business entitled Consent. And there's a motion and a second. However, we are advised that because of some recent developments, I need to read into the record all of these items. So I will do as follows with a motion and a second pending. A, DuPage County Board Regular Meeting, Tuesday, March 22nd, 2022. B, Payment of Claims, 318-2022 Pay List. C, Payment of Claims, 322-2022 Pay List. D, Payment of Claims, 325-2022 Pay List. E, Payment of Claims, 328-2022 Auto Debit Pay List. F, Payment of Claims, 329-2022 Pay List. G, Payment of Claims 41-2022 Pay List. H, Payment of Claims 45-2022 Pay List. I, Wire Transfers, 46-2022 Wire Transfer. J, Consent Item, County Clerk Monthly Report of Receipts and Dispersments, March 2022. And K, Consent Items Change Orders to Various Contracts as Specified in the Attached Package. There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. On to the order of county board, Member Ashley Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on CBR 182-22, a resolution, appointment of Suzanne Callahan to the DuPage County Ethics Commission.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
And Schworzy.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lastly, I move on CBR 183-22, a resolution, appointment of Ted Donner to the DuPage County Ethics Commission.
And a motion and a second. A request, is there a request for leave? Leave is granted. Thank you very much, Member Selman, a fine report on county board. On to the order of finance, Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. So today, on today's agenda, you're going to find a recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to OpenGov Inc. for budgeting and planning software for the finance department. The OpenGov purchase will provide for automated reporting and a dashboard that will make the county's financial information more accessible and easy to understand. It is not only a tool for staff, but it's also intended for county departments, county board members, and the general public. So the, this recommendation fits nicely into the Act Initiative, which we just spoke about earlier, you just mentioned. This purchase is going to improve efficiency and reduce duplication and encourage resource sharing across governmental agencies. So I'm, I'm really pleased, I'm very excited about this, and I just want to really congratulate our finance staff on doing the work for this and bringing this initiative forward. So with that, I will make, I will move to approve FIR 017722, Acceptance of an Extension to the Technical Service Agreement Contract Number S 5310201901 between the Regional Transportation Authority and DuPage County to extend through June 30th, 2022.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani.
Aye.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
And Zay.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 017822, Resolution Acceptance and Appropriation of the DuPage Housing Authority, DHA, Family Self-Sufficiency Program in the amount of $121,726.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I move approval of FIR 017922, Resolution Acceptance and Appropriation of the DuPage Care Center Foundation Music Therapy Grant, $52,322.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 018022, Resolution Acceptance and Appropriation of the DuPage County Care Center Foundation Recreational Therapy Grant in the amount of $20,709.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 018122, Resolution Acceptance and Appropriation of the DuPage Care Center Foundation Coordinator Grant, $25,838.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 018422, Resolution Budget Transfers, April 12th, 2022, from various companies and accounting units.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIP 013422, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to OpenGov Inc. for the Budgeting and Planning Software for a Period of April 18th, 2022 through April 17th, 2027, in the amount of $1,202,109.38.
$212,000, I believe. Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FICO 001422, Recommendation for the Approval of an Amendment to Resolution FIP 040121 for a Change Order Amending Purchase Order 54880001 for a Contract Issue to Hart Center, Hart Inner Civic for Voting Equipment in the amount of $111,704.
There's a request for leave. Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of Authorization for Overnight Travel of One Supervisor for the Assessment Employee to Attend Illinois Property Assessment Institute 2022 Spring Conference.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. And finally, I move approval, Authorization for Overnight Travel for Finance Employee, for one finance employee to attend the Government Finance Officers Association.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Chaplin, a fine report. On to the Ad Hoc Fine Arts Committee, Member Lynn LaPlante.
Thank you so much, Chairman. I just wanted to give everyone an update and also request that right now, save the date, pull out your phone, write this in. That's it, that's it. Grab a pen, whatever it takes. Saturday, May 28th, the inaugural DuPage Community Arts Festival that's going to be held on the DuPage County Fairgrounds. So this is a beautiful sneak peek at some of the slides that were given to us by Macklin. Thank you so much to Macklin for helping us put this beautiful slide deck together and helping us with our logo. And this is a beautiful and wonderful example of bipartisan work. This is what we've done on the DuPage County Board. I'm so proud of this. It's a brand-new initiative, a brand-new idea. We've worked together, and what we have created is really going to be fantastic. I cannot wait for you all to be there and experience it. I would like to thank some of the community partners that we've been working super closely with. Jim McGuire, the Executive Director of the DuPage County Fair Association. A round of applause, please, for Jim. Jim and I make a fantastic team, if I say so myself. Would you not agree, Jim? We're on the same page, we share the same vision, and we have the same work ethic, which is basically, we've been working our tails off, have we not? So thank you for being right here, right alongside me, as we, you know, this is a brand-new vision. You've been just a wonderful partner. Your enthusiasm is great, and we are so excited to show off our fairgrounds. There's so much potential there, and we invite you all to come down to our fairgrounds so you can see what it is, what is possible here. I would also like to thank Mr. Greg Betaloff and Choose DuPage. He's been a wonderful partner as well. A round of applause for Greg. Yes. He's been instrumental in getting this initiative out in front of the business community, because I've said it once, I'm going to say it three million times, or as many as it takes, the arts drive economic development. What's good for DuPage County is to have a strong and robust economy. How do you have that? You have a strong and robust arts community. So thank you so much, Greg. This has been a wonderful partnership as well. And a shout out to Beth Marquetti of the DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau. She knows firsthand what kind of dollars the arts drives. It increases tourism, tourism, it increases participation, and I'd like to thank Beth very much for her help as well. So everyone, mark your calendars. We will see you there. If you would like to know more, attend our Fine Arts Committee. We are meeting today at 2:00 PM. You can join us via Zoom. Well, actually, you can watch it afterwards on YouTube or join us in person, right here, just down the hall, 2:00 PM today. So much to tell you about, can't wait. Keep watching and listening to this space. We're going to keep giving you updates and giving you more information as the date draws closer. And I'd like to thank my committee for their wonderful work, bipartisan effort, everyone on this board who has supported this initiative. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, thank you, Member LaPlante, for your leadership and your passion for this wonderful, wonderful opportunity, and I'm looking forward to it. Memorial Day weekend, fabulous. On to the order of development, Member Sam Tornatori.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. As Vice Chair Garcia chaired the last week's committee, I will defer to her to present this morning's resolution.
Thank you, Chair Tornatori. I'm looking for a motion for A DCO 0021, St. 22. This is for, to approve the following zoning relief, variation to allow a six-foot, 100% closed privacy fence within the 10-foot corner side yard setback.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
The motion was by Desart. Okay. Desart. Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia. Hart. Krajewski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge. Schworzy. Selman. Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
And Covert.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Garcia, fine report. On to the order of environmental, with Member Sheila Rutledge with a committee update. Member Rutledge.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, everybody, and happy Earth Month. Later on this month, we'll be celebrating Earth Day, and I'm sure I'll have some more updates at our next meeting. But this morning, I want to remind everybody that we do have a tour scheduled for Scare, who is our educational partner on all things recycle. And I urge you all to come because she has a warehouse full of things that they have saved from going into landfills. And she's just an amazing resource for all things environmental. So please join us on the 27th at 10:00 AM, if you haven't already. Tell Angelo you'll be joining us. The other thing, on each of your places, there is an effort on Saturday, April 23rd, for a Prairie Path cleanup. I will be hosting the Geneva Spur portion of the Prairie Path for Cleanup, so please join us. Or if your community is not listed on this, there is contact at the bottom of this flyer to get those initiatives in place in your districts. And then I also wanted to talk a few minutes more about my comments this morning at finance, about the $500,000 that we are approving on intergovernmental agreements to mow grass.[1685.58]
$500,000 that we are approving on intergovernmental agreements to mow grass. I'm kind of all over on this because there is so much information on why this is a bad idea for our environment. But I just wanted to read this one paragraph. "Lawn's are an American obsession since the mass proliferation of suburbs in the 50s and 60s. These pristine carpets of green turf have been meticulously maintained by suburbanites with grass length and other aesthetic considerations enforced with bylaws and by homeowner associations. But for nature, lawns offer little. Their maintenance produces more greenhouse gases than they absorb, and they are biodiversity deserts that have contributed to vanishing insect populations. Residential lawns cover 2% of U.S. land and require more irrigation than any agricultural crop grown in the country." Understand that that's probably a little more on the coast. So, across California, more than half of household water is used outside of the house. We cannot do that anymore. They don't even have water for food out there these days. If attitudes towards lawn care are shifted, however, these grassy green patches represent a gigantic opportunity. In 2005, a NASA satellite study found that American residence lawn, residential lawns take up 49,000 square miles, nearly equal in size to the entire country of Greece. According to environmental scientists, transforming lawns into miniature modular bio reserves could not only boost biodiversity, but could cut water and petrol consumption and reduce the use of dangerous lawn chemicals." It goes on and on, and there is just a wealth of information about other reasons that we should try to limit this. So, again, I'm going to ask that these intergovernmental agreements have some kind of a provision that encourages these communities to figure out ways to limit that amount of grass that we have to maintain. The 75th Street Corridor-
What would you suggest we install grasses or some sort of more natural-
Low-growing clovers are very low maintenance. They could be mowed if they needed to be. There are several low-
Hybrid grasses that are more-
Shorter natives, which drives those stormwater lower into the soils, so helps absorb some of that where grass does not do that. Their roots are this tall, so everything just runs off. I say that 75th Street corridor where we have 200 feet of-
Artificial grass? That's no good. That's another environmental problem.
But how about we do community gardens along there and send that money, or send that food to the food pantry? There's a wealth of ideas on that, but in order, you know, if we just keep approving this year after year after year, that's not gonna get us anywhere. So, thank you so much for allowing me-
Sure. Always like your little tidbits. Thank you. Onto the Order of Health and Human Services, member Renahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As far as committee update, last week at HHS, we had in our very own family center to discuss outreach and all that they do with board support, of course, helping families and with child exchange and visitation during difficult times involved with divorce, and all done with care and concern. So, I'd like to recognize Sheila Murphy-Russell. Sheila's been there for about 20 years. She's heading up the family center for a very long time, and she will be missed. Her passion is undeniable. So, welcome to Tori Kappas in coming in that position. And it's just such a great example for all of us to see the supports that counties provide to residents. And I'll extend, please feel free to contact them. They're very enthusiastic to show this board the work that they do, and they're just located right across the street. So, I'll move to approve HHS P zero one two seven twenty-two recommendation contract purchase order with optimum management resources for technical assistance and consultation. The DuPage County homeless continue of care April 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022, not to exceed $32,000.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll. Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon. Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Pacowski.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Renahan?
I move to combine items 13, B, C, and D. These are all supplemental staffing for the Care Center. They're all dated April 13, 2022 through April 12, 2023. They're all not exceed contracts, and they are all partially ARPA-funded.
There's a motion and a second to combine items B, C, and D. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Osnay. The ayes have it. The items are combined. Please proceed.
Thank you. I move approval of HHS P zero one two eight twenty-two. This is a contract with Nova Staff Healthcare Services supplemental staff staffing, not to exceed 914,000. HHS P zero one two nine twenty-two purchase order with Maxim Healthcare Services, not to exceed 600,000. And HHS P zero one three oh twenty-two purchase order to Bright Stair Care of Central DuPage Wheaton, not to exceed 394,000.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan, one more item, I believe.
I move approval of HHS P zero one three one dash twenty-two recommendation for approval of contract Echolab for laundry chemicals for the Care Center, April 24, 2022 through April 23, 2023, not to exceed 31,000.
Thank you. There's been a motion, a second, a request for leave. Leave is granted. Thank you, member Renahan. A fine report. Onto Judicial Public Safety, member Renahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also like to recognize Heather Jamison from Family Shelter, Metropolitan Family Services, as we all know, is a great partner to DuPage County. She came in last week to provide an overview and of the advocacy and services that they do to help domestic violence survivors. This is, again, something that the board supports and such an important partner and a resource. And really, this is not an income-based support, so if you know somebody that's experiencing domestic violence, there's an office over at the court, and I recommend you learn more. So, I move approval of JSP S P zero one one six twenty-two approval of contract with Peter M. King of King Holloway LLC for professional services as a conflict attorney for the court, May 1st, 2022 through April 30, 2023, not to exceed 42,000.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon. Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckhoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
And Pacowski. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Renahan.
Thank you. I move approval of JSP S P zero one one seven twenty-two contract with Norx Group, Inc. to provide 190 new stainless steel tables for detainees within the jail for the sheriff, April 12, 2022 through April 11, 2023.
Leave is granted.
Not to exceed 328,710.51. This is an ARPA item.
Thank you, member Renahan. Leave is granted.
I move approval of JSP S P zero one one eight twenty-two contract purchase order to HOV Services to provide professional consultation and technical assistance with application systems for the court, cert court clerk, June 1st, 2022 through May 31st, 2023, not to exceed 723,699.
Leave is granted.
And finally, I move approval of the authorization for overnight travel for the Emergency Management Coordinator to go to Springfield, April 27th to 29th, 2022, for a statewide conference, no additional cost to the county. Thank you.
Thank you, member Renahan. A fine report again. Onto the Order of Legislative, member Dawn Desart.
Thank you, Chairman. The spring legislative session ended in the wee hours of Saturday morning. In two weeks, we're not meeting today, but in two weeks, our, all of our Springfield lobbyists will join our legislative session via Zoom to give us an update on everything that took place during the shortened spring session. In Washington, our federal lobbyist, Bill Viney, tells us that the Russian invasion of Ukraine has overtaken virtually every issue in Washington, from foreign policy to federal spending to the economy. In the past month, President Biden has devoted significant amounts of time and resources to rallying support for the Ukrainians and imposing severe sanctions on Russians and the Russian government. That conflict has resulted in an increase in defense spending and another potential increase in the coming year, and this comes after nearly two years of large-scale domestic spending. So, there's been a real shift there to deal with the pandemic. The situation in Ukraine has exacerbated the economic challenges of inflation and supply-chain disruptions that resulted from the pandemic. So, look for executive actions focused on easing financial burdens, like the increased fuel prices that we're currently enduring. Meantime, the Biden administration has begun to implement its signature achievement, the Infrastructure Investments and Jobs Act. The administration is also touting the confirmation of Judge Katanga Brown Jackson to a seat on the Supreme Court. Her confirmation as the first black woman to sit on the court is truly historic. And even as the Ukraine conflict continues to dominate our headlines, Congress is poised to act on the continuing response to COVID-19, a global competitiveness measure, and spending bills for the coming fiscal year. On a more personal note, our federal lobbyist, Bill Viney, had successful surgery yesterday, and we, he's going to be out for four to six weeks while he recovers. And just as a reminder, there is a card on Michelle's desk in the county board office. If you'd all like to go and sign it, we should bill a speedy recovery. Thank you.
Thank you, member Desart. A fine report. I do appreciate your leadership on the Legislative Committee. You've been very thorough and responsible and very communicative. Onto the next order of business, Public Works, member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, I am bringing forward a contract for $21 million. Mr. Kotmeyer informed me this is probably the biggest contract, individual contract he's ever seen in his 25 years. This contract will provide new electrical systems for both the Woodridge and Knollwood wastewater facilities. I can't give you the exact date when they were last, they were not renov, they've been built 40 years ago, and this will take them into the next 40 years with an updated electrical system. So, I want to thank the staff of Public Works, Facilities Management, and also our procurement department for bringing this contract forward. First, I'd like to, I'd like to move to approve PW CO zero three ninety-six A twenty-one amendment to resolution PW CO zero three ninety-six twenty-one issued to Superior Industrial Equipment Company to, due to needed additional funds for the Nitro Pump Number One Impeller Replacement at the Woodridge Green Valley Treatment Facility for Public Works to increase the contract in the amount of $35,268.77, taking the original contract amount to $50,000, resulting in an amendment contract total amount not to exceed $85,268.77, an increase of 70.54%. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Do you know what? I got the wrong paper. Forgive me. I wrote my introductory notes on Finance. Forgive me. Okay. I move for approval of PWR zero one seventy-four twenty-two resolution DuPage Rivers Salt Creek Work Group membership dues for 2022 to 2025 in the total amount of $808,567, to be cost shared in the amount of $111,974 to be paid by stormwater management, and 696,593 to be paid by Public Works. Public Works dues include a special condition fee for NPDES permits per I E P A and E P A requirements.
Been a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll. Ozog.
Yes.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy. Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski.
Aye.
And LaPlante. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of PWP zero one twenty-six twenty-two recommendation for the approval of a contract to Aldridge Electric Incorporated for the Electrical Infrastructure Improvement Project for the Woodridge and Knollwood Wastewater Treatment Facilities for the period April 12, 2022 through June 30, 2025, for Public Works for a contract total amount not to exceed $21,243,280.30 per lowest responsible bid.
Been a motion? Is there a second? Door doesn't slam. Doesn't slam. Good hearing. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Ozog.
Yes.
Pacowski. Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge. Schworzy. Salmon. Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckhoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski.
Aye.
And LaPlante. Okey-dokey. Member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of FMP zero one one four twenty-two recommendation for the approval of a contract to AMP Grease Trappers for sanitary grease trap and storm basin pumping, jetting, and cleaning as needed for the county campus for facilities management for the period April 14, 2022 through April 13, 2023, for a total contract amount not to exceed $124,060 per lowest responsible bid, first option to renew.
Leave is granted, member Ozog.
Thank you. I move for approval of FMP zero one one nine twenty-two recommendation for the approval of a contract to Curry Motors Frankfurt for the purchase of one 2022 Ford Transit 250 cargo high roof van and two 2022 Ford Transit 250 cargo low roof van replacement vehicles for facilities management for a total contract amount not to exceed $103,576, pricing in compliance with Government Joint Purchasing Act.
Been a motion, a second, a request for leave. Leave is granted, member Ozog.
Thank you. I move for approval of FMP zero one twenty-two recommendation for the approval of a contract to Weatherproofing Technologies Incorporated for roof restoration work at the JTK Administration Building for Facilities Management for the period April 13, 2022 through November 30, 2022, for a total contract amount not to exceed $924,259.15, contract pursuant to Intergovernmental Cooperation Act.
There's been a motion and a second, and because of our friend Grant Eckhoff, we're going to be honored to call the roll. We want to include member Eckhoff. Ozog.
Yes.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy. Salmon. Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert. Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckhoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski.
Aye.
And LaPlante. Member Ozog.
Thank you. I move for approval of FMP zero one twenty-one twenty-two recommendation for the approval of a contract to Hill Mechanical Corporation for the replacement of air handling units three, four, and five at the Care Center for Facilities Management for the period April 13, 2022 through June 30, 2023, for a total contract amount not to exceed $702,134.40 per lowest responsible bid.
Leave is granted, member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And finally, I move for approval of a change order PW CO zero three ninety-six A twenty-one amendment to resolution PW CO zero three ninety-six twenty-one issued to Superior Industrial Equipment Company due to needed additional funds for the Nitro Pump Number One Impeller Replacement at the Woodridge Green Valley Treatment Facility for Public Works to increase the contract amount of $35,268.77, taking the original contract amount of $50,000, resulting in an amended contract total amount not to exceed $85,268.77, an increase of 70.54%.
Leave is granted. Thank you very much, member Ozog.
Thank you.
Onto the Order of Stormwater, member Jim Zay, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. On a committee update, I just want to thank Mayor Grasso for coming out and Senator Duckworth for item B on the agenda. That's, again, more intergovernmental cooperation. Also, want to point out on item A, we'd like to thank Representative Amy Grant for a state grant for the stabilization project in Winfield Creek. So, without our, our intergovernmental cooperation, we don't get a lot of these projects done. So, I want to thank them for that. With that, I move on to move for approval on SMR one seventy-five twenty-two recommendation of approval of intergovernmental agreement between DuPage County and the Village of Winfield.
Been a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk. Please call the roll. Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin. Chavez.
Aye.
Covert. Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani.
Aye.
Eckhoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante. Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Salmon.
Aye.
And Tornatori.
Aye.
Thank you. Member Zay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMR one seventy-six twenty-two recommendation of approval of intergovernmental agreement between the county DuPage and Village of Burr Ridge for Elm Creek Street Culvert Replacement Project.
Leave is granted, member Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMP one twenty-two twenty-two approval of contract issued to V3 Companies to provide professional native vegetation management in the amount not to exceed $65,000.
Leave is granted. Mr. Zay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMP one twenty-three twenty-two approval of contract issued to Cardno to provide professional native vegetation management, not to exceed $65,000.
Leave is granted, Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMP one twenty-four twenty-two approval of contract issued to Hampton, Lazini, and Renwick to provide professional native vegetation management services, not to exceed $65,000.
Leave is granted, member Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMP one twenty-five twenty-two approval of contract purchase order issued to earth versus land management improvement to furnish equipment design for country club highland drainage projects, the amount not to exceed $654,525.15 per lowest responsible bid.
Leave is granted, Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMCO twelve twenty-two SMP eighty-eight A twenty-two amendment to resolution SMP eighty-eight twenty-two issued to AMS Mechanical Services for Elmhurst Corey Pipe Replacement Project.
Leave is granted, Mr. Zay.
And finally, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on SMCO thirteen twenty-two SMP seventy-eight nineteen amendment to resolution issued to Comcast for, provide secure data to our remote control facilities, the amount not to exceed $63,000.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Mr. Zay. A fine report. That concludes Stormwater. We move on to the next order of business entitled Technology, member Ashley Salmon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on TEP one thirty-two dash twenty-two recommendation for the approval of a contract to CDWG for additional storage to accommodate increased backup volume, the cost of $38,784.34 bought via the Governmental Joint Purchasing Act.
Been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Salmon.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. Desart. DeCiani. Eckhoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski. LaPlante. Ozog. Pachowski. Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
And Schworzy.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Member Salmon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on TEP 133-22, Recommendation for an Approval of a Contract to Alkemi Technology Group. This is for our single sign-on and multi-factor authentication products. Goes from April 30, 2022 to April 29, 2025, for a cost of $267,428.77, and this is an art item.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Salmon, a fine report. Onto the order of Transportation, Member Don Pachowski.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I would move to approve DTR 0157-22, An Intergovernmental Agreement Between the County of DuPage and the Forest Preserve of DuPage County, Providing for the Maintenance of Trail Improvements Related to Trucks and New Segment of the North Central DuPage Regional Trail in Pratt Swain Woods Forest Preserve.
And a motion and a second, Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy. Salmon. Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. DeSart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski. LaPlante. And Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Pachowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've moved to combine Agenda Items B to N, which are all mowing contracts and intergovernmental agreements.
So B, the letter B through the letter N, as in Nancy. There's been a motion to combine those items, all those in favor say aye. All those nay, the ayes have it, the items are combined. The second was Mr. Zay, I believe. Are you seeking recognition, Member Rutledge?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Chairman. I, I just would like to see that if we're going to approve something like this, that we do have that metric to get these communities to start reducing the amount of turf that we're all maintaining, and I'd like a voice vote on this, on these combined items, please.
Okay. So that's always an order, a request for a voice vote. So yes, so items are combined, B through N. Mr. Pachowski, please proceed.
Thank you. Move to approve DTR 0158-22, An Intergovernmental Agreement Between the County of DuPage and the Edison Township Highway Department for Mowing Along County Roads and Right-of-Ways for an annual cost of $28,735.75 for four years. Move to approve DTR 0159-22, An Intergovernmental Agreement between the County of DuPage and Bloomington Township Road District for Mowing Along County Roads and Right-of-Ways for an estimated cost of $22,789.78. Move to approve DTR 0160-22, An Intergovernmental Agreement Between the County of DuPage and Village of Carroll Stream for Mowing Along County Roads and Right-of-Ways for an estimated county cost of $30,536,041. Move to approve DTR 0166-22, An Intergovernmental Agreement between the County of DuPage and City of Daren for Mowing Along County Roads and Right-of-Ways for an estimated cost of Move to approve DTR 0162-22, An Intergovernmental Agreement between the County of DuPage and Village of Glendale Heights for Mowing Along County Roads and Right-of-Ways for an estimated cost of $27,172,43. Move to approve DTR 0163-22, An Intergovernmental Agreement between the Counties of DuPage and Village of Hanover Park for Mowing Along County Roads and Right-of-Ways for an estimated cost of $20,031. Move to approve DTR 0164-22, An Intergovernmental Agreement between the Counties of DuPage and City of Naperville for Mowing Along County Roads and Right-of-Ways for an estimated cost of $41,493.15. Move to approve DTR 0165-22, An Intergovernmental Agreement between the Counties of DuPage, Naperville Township Road District for Mowing Along County Roads and Right-of-Ways for an estimated county cost of $154,387.78. Move to approve DTR 0166-22, An Intergovernmental Agreement between the Counties of DuPage and Village of Opitz for Mowing Along County Roads and Right-of-Ways for an estimated county cost of $8,469.20. Move to approve DTR 0167-22, An Intergovernmental Agreement between the Counties of DuPage and the City of Wheaton for Mowing Along County Roads and Right-of-Ways for an estimated cost of $2,309.89. Move to approve DTR 0168-22, An Intergovernmental Agreement between the Counties of DuPage and the Village of Willbrook for Mowing Along County Roads and Right-of-Ways for an estimated county cost of $27,752.95. Move to approve DTR 0169-22, An Intergovernmental Agreement between the Counties of DuPage and Winfield Township Highway Department for Mowing Along County Roads and Right-of-Ways for an estimated cost of $53,077.56. And finally, move to approve DTR 0170-22, An Intergovernmental Agreement between the Counties of DuPage and the Village of Oprah for Mowing Along County Roads and Right-of-Ways for an estimated cost of $34,317.81.
Very skillful. We need some, get him some oxygen. Okay, there's been a motion and a second, but Member Rutledge asked for a vo, or a roll call, so. Yes, oh, Member Chaplin.
Yes, thank you. Just for clarification, I believe these are county properties that the municipalities are maintaining for us, is that correct? Okay, so when we're talking about policies, these are our policies, not the municipality policies, so just for, because I don't want that misunderstanding out there, so this is our, so we can start that, like, through our own initiatives here.
Thank you for that correction, Member Chaplin. I, I am aware of that, and yes, that is my, you know, but I think that it is a cooperative with the, the county and those municipalities, so I think we all have to work on that. Thank you.
Okay, with that understanding, there's been a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan. Rutledge.
No.
Schworzy. Salmon. Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. DeSart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski. LaPlante. And Ozog.
Okay, thank you. Member Pachowski.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to combine Agenda Items O, P, and Q, which are all awarding resolutions.
O, P, and Q, there's been a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. All those nay, the ayes have it, the items are combined. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Move to approve DTR 0171-22, An Awarding Resolution, ERA Valivia Construction, Inc., for the 2022 Various Bridge Repair Program for an estimated county cost of $1,459,743.33. Move to approve DTR 0172, An Awarding Resolution K5 Construction Corporation for the 2022 Pavement Maintenance South Program for an estimated county cost of $4,697,380.59, is low bid, and motion to approve DTR 0173, An Awarding Resolution Argus Dunton Company for the 2022 Maintenance for Wind North for an estimated county cost of $5,308,504 per low bid.
And a motion and a second on these three items. Is there a request for leave? Oh, yeah, we can't. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan. Rutledge. Schworzy. Salmon. Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. DeSart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski. LaPlante. And Ozog.
Mr. Pachowski.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved to combine Agenda Items R to Z, which are all approval of contracts.
R through Z?
Yes.
Okay, R through Z. There's been a motion and a second to combine those items, all those in favor say aye. All those nay, the ayes have it, the items are combined, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve DTP 0106, Recommendation of Approval of Contract to Vulcan Construction Materials LLC to Furnish and Deliver Course and Fine Aggregates as Needed for the Department of Transportation, $30,000, Public Works, $50,000, Facilities Maintenance, $25,000 for Contract Not to Exceed $105,000. Move to approve DTP 0107, Recommendation of Approval of Contract to Zynga Ready Mix to Furnish and Deliver Portland Cement Concrete as Needed for Department of Transportation, $50,000, Public Works, $30,000, Facilities Maintenance, $20,000 for Contract Not to Exceed $105,000. Motion to approve DTP 0108, Recommendation of Approval of Contract to Duquesne Asphalt Company to Furnish and Deliver Tumus Paving Materials for the Central Region as Needed for Department of Transportation for Contract Not to Exceed $110,000. Motion to approve DTP 0109, Recommendation of Approval of Contract to Porter Construction to Furnish and Deliver Tumus Paving Materials for the Western Region as Needed for Department of Transportation, $25,000, Facilities Maintenance, $25,000 for Contract Not to Exceed $50,000. Motion to approve DTP 0110, Recommendation of Approval of Contract with BLA Inc. for Professional Construction Engineering Services for Improvements along 75th Street from Millbrook to Greenrobe for Contract Not to Exceed $489,432,33. Motion to approve DTP 0111, Recommendation of Approval of Contract with Bowman Consulting Group, Inc. for Various Construction Engineering Services for Various Improvements for a Contract Not to Exceed $400,000. Motion to approve DTP 0112, Recommendation of Approval of Contract with STV Incorporated for Professional Construction Engineering Services for Improvements at 87th Street and Woodward Avenue for Contract Not to Exceed $675,937.50. Motion to approve DTP 0113, Recommendation of Approval of Contract with Kundal Consulting Inc. to Provide Professional Bridge Inspection Services for Various Locations upon Request for Contract Not to Exceed $150,000. And finally, motion to approve DTP 0115, Recommendation of Approval of Contract with K5 Construction for Furnishing and Delivering Tumus Paving Materials for the Southeast Region as Needed for Contract Not to Exceed $135,000.
Very nice. There's been a motion and a second. Because in honor of Member Schworzy, we're going to take a roll call. There's been a motion and a second, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. No. We're, we're honoring you right now.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan. Rutledge. Schworzy. Salmon. Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez. Covert. DeSart. DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart. Kuduski. LaPlante. And Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Pachowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move to approve AA, which is Change Order Amendment to Resolution, DTP 0025-200, issued to Petroleum Traders Corporation to Furnish and Deliver Gasoline Diesel as Needed for Department of Transportation and Department of Public Works, Increasing Amount $125,000, resulting in a new contract of $1,400,000, increase of 9.8%.
Leave is granted.
Move to approve Agenda Item AB, which is Amendment to DTR 0109A-22, Amendment to a Local Agency Agreement between the County of DuPage and the Department of Transportation for Improvements along Warrenville Road over the east branch of the DuPage River, re-execute using the state's new form, if no changes to term, conditions, and costs know or reimbursed to the county.
Leave is granted.
Motion to approve AC, which is Amendment to DTR 0001A-20, Amendment to a Resolution between the County of DuPage and the Department of Transportation for Improvements along intersections in Belmont, Findlay, and Ogden Avenue, to correct the projection section number. And then finally, motion to approve AD, which authorizes travel for our Director of Transportation and Chief Engineer to Bloomington, Illinois Normal, for a cost not to exceed $797,050.
Leave is granted.
If Chris Snyder does this again, you are paying him.
Thank you. Leave is granted, Member Pachowski. That's it, ADD. All right, thank you very much, a fine report. You get an award for your, I don't know about the transcription, though, what people are going to think, but other than that. Yeah, so that concludes all our committee reports, and thank you, everybody did a fine job. Can you put those right over here, sir? Thank you, sir. So now we move on to the next item of business, familiar to us. Item is entitled Discussion. Discussion, anyone who wants to raise an issue regarding Public Act 990646, which obligates us to address the, the subject matter of government wage increase, increases required